And I'm sure you wouldn't have a problem doing it again. But I'd like to take a moment and of silence to reflect on the most recent loss of our representative Peter Kokot. And just leave it at that. I'll just call for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Just to let folks know, I believe the camera's still rolling, so that this meeting will be recorded visually and audio, if you want to. That's a word. For your informed consent. Laura, would you please call the role of Legislative Matters Committee?
Counselor White.
Here. Here. Okay. We are all here, so we have a quorum. We are convened. I'm going to try and do this a little differently, I think. Rather than an upfront public comment, what I will do is actually accept public comment without limitation on time, but just please be mindful of time as we go through the items. That way you can speak directly to the specific items and your concerns relative to those. As I said, this is zoning. That's all we'll be discussing tonight. The zoning for marijuana retail. Some of the other issues that came up in the previous forum will be addressed either on the council floor or in other committee meetings. But this, so we want to stay on what's on the agenda, given the fact that that's what we're required to do by law, by opening law. Is stick to the items on the agenda. So. Okay. So first, is there a motion to accept the minutes from our meeting of February 12? Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
By the way, and I think, okay. Before we proceed, I want to introduce Counselor Carney, Counselor Klein, Counselor Murphy, City Solicitor Alan Seawall is here also. And Laura's going to keep us all on track and keep fine fettle and just keep us, keep the balloon from spinning around the room, basically, so. So this is, this is the public hearing. And I'll read you the public hearing notice. This is Northampton Public Hearing. It's Tuesday, February 27, 2018. The City Council on Legislative Matters and the Council Chambers 12 Main Street, 7:00 p.m. Proze zoning ordinance amendments. And this is regulations for the sale and production of marijuana, including clarification of definitions. Amend the tables in general business, entryway business, highway business, central business to allow retail sales. Amend 350-9.3 prohibit the conversion or of nonconforming commercial uses to retail marijuana sales. Four, specify outdoor growing, not sales allowed in rural residential, suburban residential, water supply protection regions and special conservancy districts. And also reformat the table of use for general industrial with attachment 15, including expanding allowed uses to include industrial warehousing. Clarifying language regarding solar photovoltaic. Clarifying marijuana production, not sales for medicinal and retail purposes is allowed. Also see to reformat the table of use of what is it? Oh, it's industrial. Office industrial, thank you. Attachment numbers, thank you, 16, including expanding allowed uses for restaurant residential above the first floor for buildings older than 1939. Eliminate parking requirements for the reuse of buildings older than 1939. Clarify marijuana production, not sales for medicinal and retail purposes is allowed and allow commercial storage as principal use. So there we go. That's the lay of that land. So. As I would ask that someone put this on the floor so that we can address the items as are listed. And then I will ask Carolyn to basically give us a walkthrough of the planning board's thoughts, the mayor's thoughts, and how, what's the best way to proceed. So, the motion, put this on the floor.
Do we need to open a public hearing?
I'm sorry, yes, thank you. That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm shooting for, so.
Do we have to open a public hearing?
Yeah, okay. Okay. All those in favor of opening a public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
We're there. Now, Alan, I'm going to actually refer to you. Process traditionally for a public hearing, we hear from proponents, opponents, and other, and neutral test and only as well, right?
However you need chair, which is the structure, there's no
Okay, so I have some questions too.
Absolutely. As long as everyone has a fair opportunity to be heard.
Okay. Well, first, let's hear what the city's plan is. Then we'll hear from opponents, and then we'll end opponents or people with neutral thoughts on that. So. Carolyn, you want to walk us through?
Sure. So there was one other item that I wasn't, I didn't catch. I don't know if you opened it. It was also a change to the Highway Business District table. And I just, that's a part of this.
Yeah, I mentioned that. That's on number two with GBEB, HB, CB. I actually decided to use the words because everyone would just not understand what the hell is going on, so.
So I would like to go through and give an overview and a little bit of detail about the whole package of zoning in front of you. And then whatever, you know, fine detail you want to go through, if you feel like you need to read certain parts of the text. And I think Laura can put that on the screen as well. But I figured I'd just go through the entire package to show how everything is sort of tied together. So if Laura could put that up, that would be great. Great. So if you could go back to slide one. So these proposed zoning ordinances that are in front of you deal with land use regulations addressing the changes in the marijuana legislation and other commercial districts. But also there's some other refinements of the commercial districts that are not necessarily related to the retail marijuana component. So I just want to run through those. Yeah, the mouse is not cooperating. So first, we'll go through marijuana retail sales. I'm a little slow, okay. Maybe I'll hold the mouse up. So the idea is that we already have regulations that address medical marijuana dispensaries and production. So we need to add components relative to the retail sales. So we need to amend our current definitions in the zone. We also need to amend the commercial districts to specify that retail sales are allowed in order to direct where we want those to happen. If we didn't do anything, they would just be treated simply like a retail use, a fee used or operate in any district in which retail is allowed. The zoning proposal narrows it to four core districts. It also establishes a buffer zone to match what's already been codified for the medical dispensaries. And also there's a proposed amendment that would specifically prohibit the conversion of nonconforming commercial uses to this retail function. So I'll go through that in detail a bit. So for the definitions, we have to sort of establish a definition for the medical, retail, and production side for marijuana. So in terms of production, it's currently allowed in the general industrial districts by right unless you're creating a new building, which would trigger site plan review by the planning board. It's also allowed in office industrial, in the office industrial district, unless, again, new construction would trigger a planning board review. In terms of outdoor cultivation, what's proposed is to allow cultivation outdoors if it's licensed by the state in the water supply protection, special conservancy, rural residential, and suburban residential. So it's basically everything outside that red hatched area falls into one of those four zones. But if you, I don't know how well you can see that from behind me, but a lot of it is already built out as neighborhoods. So it's not necessarily indicating that the entire, you know, the majority of the city is available for cultivation. But anywhere where there are agricultural fields essentially, or enough area to grow, that could be potentially approved. By site plan, the idea is to really regulate for outdoor cultivation. What is it, what does the security look like? How does it feel? How does it present itself to the public? So that's what the site plan review process would be established to address. Thanks. So for retail sales, the core, four core commercial districts that we're talking about in the proposed ordinance would be central business, entrance business, general business, and highway business. This is a map showing where those locations are in purple. Just going to try to get a highlighter on here. Nope, that didn't work. Sorry. The purple areas are the commercial districts. So basically the King Street corridor down into Main Street downtown. And then south of Main Street along Pleasant Street. And then there's a area of general business that's Florence Center. There's a little bit of highway business district out in Leeds at the intersection of Mulberry and Florence? Florence Street and Route 9. So the green circles there show what, I'll get into, are 200-foot buffers around existing schools. So this map shows that all of those circles, except for the Hampshire Educational Collaborative, which is on Pleasant Street already, all of the core commercial districts are really outside the 200-foot buffer of all the existing schools in the city. So where retail sales would be prohibited would be not within 200 feet of a K through 12 establishment. That's the same as what's currently on the books for medical dispensaries in Northampton. They wouldn't be allowed in any residential districts. They wouldn't be allowed in pre-existing nonconforming buildings, as I mentioned previously. So these are examples of places, you know, on Elm Street, there's a medical office building. But the district is zoned residential, so just because it's nonconforming, in most circumstances, if you have a nonconforming use in a district, you can go to the zoning board and request relief to change to another nonconforming use. The proposed regulations say that for this particular retail use, you couldn't even approach the zoning board to ask for that change. And the idea is that the impacts, you know, would, we're going to assume that for various reasons, the impacts in residential districts would be substantially more detrimental to that district on its face. So we're just sort of cutting that out of an option from the beginning. And of course, not allowed in any non-retail districts. So not in the industrial districts or medical districts. You hit next to me again, Laura. I hit the wrong button. Thanks. So moving a little bit more into the other zoning changes in the packet. The changes to the office industrial table is really about initially sort of reformatting the table of uses so it looks and functions like the other tables that we've slowly been amending over time. Move marijuana production from the definition section, which is where it is right now, into the actual table of use so that when you go to that table, you see that, you know, that use is allowed. Allow flexibility for new residential uses above the first floor in this district. We currently only allow live work as a component in the office industrial, which means you actually have to work in the building if you want to also live there. And it's really not been enforceable on the one hand. On the other hand, we also want to allow more opportunities to reuse the old mill buildings. So these are buildings predating, you know, built before 1939, to allow opportunities for reinvestment and reuse. And I just had it a little bit easier from that perspective. Also, I'll introduce the allowance for restaurants and some small retail entertainment in these old buildings. Again, to sort of facilitate the reuse and regeneration of those buildings. Right now, that's not allowed at all. Reduce the parking requirements for the reuse of these buildings. Typically, the planning board had a big discussion about this item. They were concerned that there might be some spillover into neighborhoods if there was a demand for parking that wasn't met on site. On the other hand, many of the buildings that are in Northampton that would be affected by this have lots of parking. You can see the key machine shop. There's already parking there. So it's not that these buildings don't have any parking, but it mirrors what's allowed, or what we allow in the central business district as well as the general business district in that we don't require the recalculation of parking for the reuse of an existing building. Footprint expansions, we do require a tabulation of how much more parking would be needed for that square footage that's added, but not for the reuse of existing buildings. So this isn't something new in Northampton, but it would be new for this industrial district for these old buildings. And then this is a change as well to allow retail self-storage, which is just sort of, you know, those big storage bins that you can drive in and dump your extra stuff that you can't store in your house. It's currently only allowed in the highway business district. And the proposal, which is the other piece of the package at the end of the presentation, is to take it out of highway business, which is the only district in which it's allowed now, and move it over to office industrial because it functions more like an industrial kind of building. And then eliminate the special permit requirements for solar arrays in the OI district. For changes to the general industrial table, they somewhat mirror the office industrial in that we need to reformat the table and move marijuana production out of the definitions into the table of use. But we also don't have a separate industrial warehousing component in our industrial district. So this would be for, you know, a FedEx facility or some kind of shipping, other shipping facility. But still minimize it to 25,000 square feet. That's not necessarily a magic number, but we don't think that we would necessarily generate interest from, you know, 100,000 square foot shipping or storage facilities. But also it's sort of scaled to Northampton. That we don't typically have those big industrial buildings anyway. And again, sort of clean up the photovoltaic or solar panel array definition and allow it to eliminate the special permit for that. And this is just a cleanup, eliminate the text regarding the reuse of historic churches and schools. There aren't actually any in the general industrial district, so we don't really need that language in there. And then finally, the last ordinance amendment that's in your package is, as I mentioned before, just eliminating the allowed use of retail storage in the highway business district because of things in the office industrial.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So as it said, what we'll do is we'll take these items as we go one by one. But and actually first, actually I'll ask if there are public comments based on the general description that you've heard. This encompasses a number of other zoning that's not specific to marijuana, of course, but I imagine most of you are here talking about marijuana and zoning transactions relative to that, so. But if not, we'll just move, we'll just move up to the first item. And that's 18.027. And this is an ordinance of the city of Northampton that was ordained by the City Council of the city of Northampton to amend section 2.1 by adding and deleting the text as shown. And Laura will call that up there for you. Striking the word "medical" in front of marijuana and then saying marijuana comma, and then adding "medical" after that. That's one. Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, or MMTC, and Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, defined and regulated by, and now striking Massachusetts General Laws and adding citation-specific ST 2012, Chapter 369. And the Massachusetts Department of, which now adding public health instead of just health regulation. And adding also, again, citation-specific 105 CMR 725.00. Along with any related land use controlled or contracted by the MMTC where marijuana may be present. And then striking from that, the paragraph that says "Medical marijuana is a subset of medical uses in medical dispensaries and is allowed in any facilities where new physicians' offices and new dispensaries and pharmacies may be located, but not locations where medical uses and dispensaries are allowed only as a pre-existing nonconform use and for any growing or processing without dispensaries in any industrial area." That language will be struck or is proposed. And adding to the adding will be marijuana production, marijuana cultivating, growing, and processing facilities where marijuana plants are growing marijuana products and manufactured and/or tested, but not where sales to consumers are made. And then I'll add, also adding marijuana retail. Any facility in which a marijuana retailer, as defined in 935 CMR 500.02, sells marijuana. Okay. So Carolyn, you want to speak to this specifically and just describe what the essence of this is?
Yeah, so the, again, so we need to, this is really leans, we don't want to duplicate the language in the regulations or the statute. So it's really defining locally how we're going to, I'm just going to call it out, is the differences between the medical and the production and the retail side of it. And again, the deletion of that tax is really because we're distributing in the use tables where those things are allowed.
Any comments come out there? Yes, sir. When you have a comment, please step up and identify yourself and give us your address for the record.
My name is Mike Cutler, and I live on Mark Warner Drive in Northampton. I practice law on Con Street. And these are just some lawyer's observations about some of the references. As of the end of this year, under the new state law, the medical supervision is going to be moving from the DPH and from this session law statute to 2012, Chapter 369. As of 2019, medical dispensaries are going to come under the ambit of the Cannabis Control Commission. So you might want to, and this session law is going to be repealed and replaced with a new comprehensive medical marijuana law, Chapter 94I. So it might be worth referencing for continuity purposes, Chapter 94I of the general laws here for the medical licensing. And just for the purposes of referencing marijuana retail under the new law, you might want to reference Chapter 94G of the general laws, which is the enabling legislation for 935 CMR 500.
Thank you for the important notes. Alan, with, of course, the reason that we are now moving with this zoning with it under existing circumstances is because applications will be accepted as of April 1st. And if we don't have the zoning in place, then they get to, they're basically have to abide by existing law, right? Existing zone. The citation, of course, as you noted, is not actually fact yet because the, but you're, I take your point. There will be the transition to oversight from the Department of Public Health.
And when that happens, we'll see Attorney Cutler back here as we have to hear.
Well, it's good to see you again. That'd be great. So in your, when you're thinking that it's appropriate to move with at least the existing agencies as they're identified now?
And as, as the law changes, we're going to have to react to that. But I don't think it's appropriate to cite something that doesn't exist yet.
Okay, good point.
And if I may, I didn't see, and maybe I missed it. I didn't see a definition of retail marijuana in 94G. I did find it in, in the draft regulations.
Well, my suggestion might be then to stay in lockstep with the state is to add some language referencing a Cannabis Control Commission licensed retail facility. Because it's, it's the licensing.
Correct.
It's a statewide, marijuana retail and all the actions of, all the tasks that are separately licensed, cultivation, manufacturing, and retail, all happens simultaneously at a local and state level. It's actually not simultaneous. You have to have your local special permit and host review done before your state application is de-compleased, I'm sure you know. But it's, it just strikes me that referencing the rate without the enabling legislation is, I mean, belting suspenders in this.
Right. Counselor Klein?
I was going to ask about that, but the second question.
Okay, okay. Okay. Counselor Ryan, any questions?
So essentially, general, for Carolyn, the general industrial, office industrial production, which is either cultivation or processing, you know, so it's essentially the same for both of those. And it's the same for the rural zones as far as outdoor cultivation. Those are RRSR, watershed protection, special conservancy. Those are all the same requirements.
I don't understand the question. The thing, we don't have outdoor cultivation now? And so this would be new for the water supply, special conservancy?
But it's the same throughout all of those zones.
Just cultivation?
Just cultivation, yeah.
No, no sales, no other production?
The cultivation requirements are the same in RRSR, watershed protection, special conservancy.
Yeah, yeah.
And on section three, the table, has general business allowed in the neighborhood business, medical business part? No. But entryway business, highway business, central business is also, it's permitted allowed in those as well?
Right. So the reason why, I mean, they're, they're set up differently. So it's, so some of them are grouped together as just, you know, to the E code. This is what you, this is how you have to change it here. And the other one is just because it's a different table setup, so.
And, and then where you talk about nonconforming commercial uses, that's the use table, not the density table. So nonconforming structure in a business zone is no problem.
Right, it's just in
It'd just be just the anomaly, pre-existing nonconforming
Use.
Retail building that's sitting on URB.
Exactly.
So it's use, okay, good.
Carolyn, hemp, I think, is going to be allowed by right now, so we're not talking, oh, hemp is is a crop like potatoes at this point, right? Is that my understanding that there are?
I have not followed that. This is really just to follow what's being controlled and licensed at the state. So in terms in terms of, so if it's allowed and it's outside of the CCC's licensing process, then yes, it would just be treated like any other. In fact, it's, they're specifically ruled on that this marijuana production is not, does not follow the same standards as agriculture and doesn't achieve the same exemption, so we haven't addressed, you know, it's very specific to this product.
So as I understand it, that hemp is being treated like any other crop, benign crop, we'll call it for lack of a better term, or, so, so would be allowed? Attorney?
Just to address the hemp issue, although it's a different use than psychoactive marijuana, to operate as a hemp producer, the session law was passed last July, the legislature amended the initiative, created a new category for hemp and hemp working, but the state Department of Agriculture is licensed, has to license you first. There's, I mean, local stuff is, is wide open, but you have to have the state license for the hemp.
Okay, thank you for that.
It's an agricultural license, well, the CCC.
Excellent, okay. All right. Any other discussion on item 18.027?
Just want to clarify one thing. So Counselor Murphy kind of jumped ahead to 18.033, correct?
He jumped around a little.
So we still have to hear from Carolyn about that one, because I'm still kind of in the dark about the nitty gritty of it all. So if we could stick to the one that we're working on, just process-wise, it would be very helpful, I think, to me and probably to the whole community.
I can see we've lost some people already. I understand, but, thank you. That's a, that's a good point. So this is, this item is item 18.033. This is an ordinance relative to zoning marijuana, of course, and this one needs, this is an ordinance to specify the retail and medical marijuana dispensaries and sales locations who not qualify for finding regarding changes to legally pre-existing non-conforming uses. The rationale is the medical and retail marijuana operations generate more short-term trips throughout any given day. Such high-volume use can have substantial impacts within zoning districts where commercial uses generally and marijuana retail and medical uses specifically are not allowed. Further, the city intends to direct medical and retail marijuana establishments within four core commercial areas where impacts can be mitigated, and those four commercial districts also allow complementary uses whereby trips can be chained together to help offset high-volume generation of such uses. And the ordinance reads, this is an ordinance of the city of Northampton, of course, section one, amend chapter 350-92 by adding and deleting the text as shown. This zoning ordinance shall not apply to, and this is the existing language, this ordinance shall not apply to structures or uses lawfully in existence or lawfully begun, or to a valid building or special permit issued before the first publication of notice of the public hearing of this chapter, or to any other exemptions in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, subsection six. The ordinance shall apply to any change or substantial extension of such use to a building or special permit issued after the first notice of said public hearing, to any reconstruction, extension, or structural change of any such structure. And any alteration of the structure begun after the first notice of said public hearing provide for its use for a substantially different purpose, or for the same purpose in a substantially different manner, or to a substantially greater extent. The new language that's being added is notwithstanding the above, nothing in this section, excuse me, shall be construed to allow a change of non-conforming use to a new non-conforming medical or retail use, or retail marijuana use. And then in section two, this is, excuse me, subsection 350-9.3, this is change, extension, alteration of legally pre-existing non-conforming structures, uses, or lots. Legally pre-existing, non-conforming structures, uses, or lots may be changed, extended, or altered as set forth below, and then added to that is except as noted in 9.2A above. And if a use is not eligible under one subsection, proceed to the next subsection. Got it? Okay. Carolyn, you want to translate, please?
All the other stuff, you don't have to worry. It, you know, it just says that although we do allow for change of non-conforming use from one to the other by going through the zoning board process, in this particular instance, therefore, retail sales would not be allowed because of the impact that's written in the preamble of that.
Right. Anyone out there want to speak, or anyone here interested in speaking? No? Okay. Let's move on. So now we're up to 18.034, this is an ordinance relative to zoning marijuana, of course. This also includes the buffer map of that, you saw Carolyn present. This is to amend the table and attachments nine, 10, 12, under allowed uses as follows, all retail, and then adding retail marijuana, very big asterisk, wholesale, and then now we go back to the original language, wholesale and business sales and supply of goods and services. And the footnote is, added, no establishment shall be located within 200 feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten or any of grades one through 12. Building facades and property must be consistent with the character of the neighborhood, including such items as transparent storefront windows with a view into the interior of the building. Security measures must appear from the outside of the building to be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And then the next section, amend table and attachments nine, 10, 12, under allowed uses, added a new line, medical marijuana. And then go down to section three, and that's to amend attachment two, the table of use principal uses, by adding a new entry as follows, retail marijuana, which I'll read the footnote now, of course, no establishment, so, I'm sorry, that's the same, that's the same footnote as before, I'll spare you that. General business A, let's see.
It's not a medical.
Okay. So medical, and then medical marijuana site, and I'll need the definition of site A, I'm not sure what that means, so. Carolyn, you speak to that?
So this is the actual, where the uses are allowed, and they're spelled out in each of the districts. So in the formatting for the attachments nine, 10, and 12 are, it's all similar, so those are grouped together. And this creates the 200-foot buffer that I spoke about earlier. And then in terms of the attachment two for the retail and medical, site needs a site plan approval by planning board. So you can do that, medical marijuana, but you still need to go through the planning board process for that. Part of that's related to the way these rules have come into being, so under the medical side, there, there's not the same taxing structure as for the retail, and so there's a concern about impacts, traffic impacts, and other impacts. In particular, a site plan review for medical would address traffic mitigation requirements. So we still want to make sure we're addressing that if any new medical marijuana dispensaries were licensed and interested in locating in the city.
Discussion, any comments? Counselor Klein?
I guess I just want to ask about the, so for retail marijuana shops, essentially, you're laying out here what the facades need to look like, and the property needs to be consistent with the structures around it. So is that actually different from any other store, any other zoning for any other kind of retail establishment? Why is it laid out here in this particular manner?
Because, so the only other place that we've used this kind of language is for porn shop shops. And the idea is, you know, we don't want to put these in back alleys where, you know, people, where there, you know, even there aren't eyes on the street, and we don't want to create these boarded-up windows right in the middle of downtown. So we want to continue to create, to make sure that there's not attraction from that pedestrian scale or type of building that's in our downtowns. And if you, there are, you know, there are restrictions both on the porn side and on the sales for medical marijuana about how you're presenting to the public and what you can and cannot display in your windows. So what we're saying is, we don't, we're not saying you have to display what you're selling, but we want you to have a display window that says something and that doesn't function differently from the other retail establishments that are in those commercial districts.
Cindy, you want to speak to this?
Just two questions, maybe you can help Carolyn. So 200 feet is the minimum established by the state. My question is, why 200? Why not 3? And help me out, is 200 feet from here to Forbes, or is 200 feet from here to Starbucks? I just want a visual. Anybody know?
Um, well, if you want to pull a, um, yeah.
Starbucks?
Well, that might be more like 100 over to Starbucks.
Okay, so maybe to Woodstar.
Well, it's probably more than 100 to Starbucks.
Yeah.
So the math is here, so that's a 200-foot ring around each of those schools. So the 200 was also decided for the medical. We have to be the same as for medical. It was debated at that time when the medical ordinances were adopted, but I put this map together to show that even if you went to 300, or 400, or 500, it's not, you know, it's, you're still talking about mostly residential districts. The thing that it might affect would be, you know, the Hampshire Educational Collaborative, which is on Pleasant Street, which is right across from a liquor store now, there, and then maybe the Talbot's Plaza down on the end by, on Bridge Street, because Bridge Street School is sort of on the other side of that district, so if you expanded it more than 200, then it would probably affect that. And that's, that may be the only one, maybe Cereals Market might be affected.
Is it a state law that we have got to do 200 feet for recreational?
It's not 200, well, we have medical establishment, so it has to be the same.
It has to be the same, okay. Now, my second question is, is this the place where we say we only want 3.4, which is what the state said our minimum needs to be? Or in this, in this zoning, where do we say that? Where do we set that?
Wait, sorry, in the zoning, you were asking about cap?
Yes.
A retail cap?
Yeah.
That, actually, it's not, I don't know, I don't actually see where it actually comes up in the zoning, that, I mean, where it would come up or be appropriate to actually introduce it. That would have to be introduced as either a new ordinance that it's not included in this package.
It doesn't have to be, it could be in zoning, it doesn't have to be, it's not necessarily a land use issue. It would probably be a general ordinance, city ordinance. The state doesn't say you have to do 3.4. The state says that if you're a community that voted in favor of it, that you can't reduce it less than 20% if you're going to institute that.
There's cap on number, but there's also density, and I think what would be more appropriate for zoning might be density, so.
Limiting.
A particular number of shops within a particular amount of feet. I don't know if that's what you were trying to get at, but that's, it's a little bit different than the cap generally.
I think I fear that we keep talking about it, in our forum, we kept talking about it, and it doesn't seem to fit anywhere, so I will just put it up, put it out again, where does it fit? And I leave that to you.
It would be a separate city ordinance.
As I said, it would have to be a separate city ordinance, introduced by counsel or by petition as well. So, for instance, at this point, would be appropriate discussing, amending the criteria for buffers on this particular item. You know, you mentioned who qualifies and so on.
Okay. Just want to know where it was. Thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts, conversation on this? Sure. If you step up, because actually, this is being recorded, so.
Hi, sure. My name is Patricia Malone, and I live on North Center Street in Florence. I do have a request about the maps, which is a bit of an aside. They're hard to see online. I'm pretty sure it's up to my street in terms of like, what is the suburban zone, Florence Center? So that's an aside, but I'm also trying to understand, we, we, we're hamstrung, there's nothing you can do about the 200 feet? There's no power locally for?
No, no.
It has to be the same?
Well, the two, we don't, we don't have the, we can't reduce it from what I understand, right? We can expand it, but it has to conform with the medical, they have to.
It has to conform to medical, you would have to go back and amend the buffer for that.
Correct.
The way that it's pitched now is it has to match what medical is, so that's what, you know, but you have to come back through, re-advertise, and also amend the medical buffer.
And there's only one way to characterize a buffer. A buffer's a buffer, we can't come up with another term or way of defining this.
It's defined in the regulations.
Got it. Yeah, I'd like to see it be more than 200 feet beyond schools, because that's one of my major concerns. And I realize it's a practical matter, there may not even be any commercially zoned areas except for that Talbot's Plaza, right? But that would be my preference, as it says.
Thank you. And actually, we got into it a little bit, but I can't think of one of the schools that actually is in a commercial zone where it would be allowed use, you know, right at that 200-foot buffer.
Right, that's why I put the map on, because it shows the boundary.
The schools are all in places where it wouldn't be zoned, but allow one anyway. So in that sense, the buffers, or the spaces all the way to a commercial zone, which is quite a ways.
How does that affect Academy? How do we, does that mean that that area of Pleasant Street with the 200 feet would not?
Right, it couldn't, right.
That's like the only one, though, I think.
Right.
So I know that some towns are, like, considering things like their, oh, I'm sorry.
Identify yourself before.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I'm Heather Warner, I live at 115 Pine Street in Florence, parent of teen boys. And, yeah, so I know that some towns, Amherst, I think East Hampton even, but they're creating this buffer zone around a few other kinds of establishments, you know, like, maybe we don't want something right next to, or even 300 feet from Forbes Library, or from the Academy of Music, or from the new treatment center that's, you know, recovery center, or, you know, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering if there are other types of places that we want to consider in Northampton. Personally, as a parent, I'm a little bit distressed about the fact that there are no caps and that any retail space downtown and in Florence and, I mean, really, it's almost like what, what isn't included in this zoning, you know, but especially downtown, where my kids like to take the bus downtown and hang out a little bit, and I'm pretty, you know, getting more and more wary of them doing that. And I moved here because of good schools and, you know, and a really nice downtown, a family-friendly downtown, so I'm hoping this isn't a pot destination type of thing where there's just unlimited, not much regulation happening. So I'd like to consider other places in the city that we wouldn't want to have pot shops right next door to.
Does Smitty have any data about the efficacy of buffer zones?
I don't have that right off the top of my head. I mean, I'm here partly as a resident right now, but I would be happy to look that up. And, you know, I know that, what we do know is that, you know, that there's relationships to density, and, you know, and even in small towns, like, there, when you also drive up competition, you lower pricing, and unlike alcohol, marijuana doesn't have low cap on low, low pricing where alcohol does. And I think that once the pricing wars start, then you find that people are a little more sloppy about checking IDs, and that's what we see with alcohol. And I know that the ADCC was out here in Northampton because there were four violations of over-service of alcohol reported, and repeat violations from certain four places. And he, Ted Mahoney said, you know, he thinks that like when you have that much density, that that kind of lack of, you know, careful control can happen. So that's a little anecdotal, I'll try to find you the evidence on that.
Yeah, if you could. Yeah, if you could get, if you could supply us with, and actually send it to the mayor's office.
Okay.
Data relative to the efficacy of particularly, not so much as zoning, because actually the impact that ultimately, buffers achieving the goal that you want without basically kind of gaining a zoning regulation.
I'm not looking to zone out marijuana, I just want to be clear about that, you know, but just to be thoughtful about where we do want it and what impact that has on passersby and young children and, yeah, so, yeah. And so it's related, I don't know that buffer zones can be completely separated from density, you know, and just a large number of places.
Okay, that's fine. Anything would be helpful.
Okay.
Other comments about the buffer zones as they were defined here?
Just make one, one point that's important to consider. Under Chapter 40A, zoning districts have to be uniform. Now, the legislature has given us the authority to create buffers around schools K through 12, but just because there's a particular use in a particular place now, doesn't mean that you can zone around that particular use because it's not uniform in the district anymore. So I think we need to be really careful in our thinking about this, not to violate the uniformity principle of zoning districts.
Although many other communities have done it, so it may hold up.
It may, but I'm, I just want to put that out there as a concern. And just because other communities have done it, doesn't mean it's going to hold up, and I just want to be careful about that. That's it, just wanted to put that out there. I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm just saying it's something you have to think about.
Sure, come on up.
I just wanted to make an observation about the buffer zones, just a couple of points. First of all, we're comparing, I mean, I think it's fair to compare, and I'm also the father of a successful child, so I have some concerns for drug use among adolescents. And legalization is all about giving more control to child's access than prohibition and having a functioning, available set of outlets. It's important not only to having tax-regulated sales, but also to generating revenue for the town. And in looking at marijuana as a use, I think it's fair to compare that and look at what we do with zoning with alcohol and tobacco relative to the institutions we want to protect and the children and other delicate people that we want to be concerned about having access or being, seeing all these things. The other point that I would make is that there's robust data, current data, in the mature, reformed states that have legalized before us that show adolescent use is not increased and has been reduced in several of the mature states. So as we consider these issues, I think it's worth looking at the, we're not doing this for the first time in the United States. There are four states that precede us, and there's some fairly robust data on the adolescent safety impacts of these legalized outlets.
Thank you. Thoughts or comments? Sure. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to comment, just came up at the previous forum about the data. I know that in Colorado, some of the data that is being published is statewide, but when you begin to look at those communities that have banned the sale of marijuana because they have that local control versus those communities where it's actually being sold, you see that there's an increase in use in those communities where, where it's actually being sold, like Denver.
What else? Go ahead. We'll move on to item 18.035, this is zoning of marijuana. This one, this one's up on Civic Plus, here we go. This is to, under Section 1, this is to amend attachments 4, 5, 18, 24, under quote, site plan approval required for the following, close quote, add the following new collet. Open outdoor marijuana cultivation, all security fencing that includes razor wire or other physical security measures that are not typically residential in character, must be screened by education so that it's not visible from the public ways nor from other principal residential structures within 300 feet. If a fence or other security structure is planned within FEMA mapped floodplain, it must be shown to be engineered to withstand expected floodwaters or must be engineered to include a particular way that opens to flood conditions. Okay, well, this one's fairly straightforward, Carolyn, but do you want to enhance it a little bit?
Yeah, I mentioned before, it's really just sort of how it looks in those districts that I think is important to address. We don't know really how many of these, if there'd be any interest in, in creating any of these. We had someone come in and ask about it, but, you know, given that we're in New England, probably get minimal, you know, I don't know that it'd be competitive with an indoor facility, but there, the idea is just, it could also help make farm parcels more viable, so we just wanted to allow that as an option.
It specifies marijuana principally because obviously it's easy to put a razor wire around their tomatoes, is what you're saying.
Oh, hi. I get a little bit confused about this. I think what you're saying is that outdoor growing of marijuana would be permitted in any sort of parcel that anything else could be grown on?
Essentially agricultural parcels.
So, you know, sort of down by Mains Field or where the, you know, not Mains Field, but like, yeah, any of those little places around Florence that, or Spring, Springfield, the Lee Ball Fields across from that where they have the community gardens, that could be a parcel. I know that the regulations require, like, fencing, it can't be seen from the road, it can't be seen from the, you know, all these, these conditions and everything, and I'm just thinking like, that's going to be a horrendous eyesore of itself just to have it all blocked off. I mean, these are, things are not like little plants, they're like trunks that grow big, you know? So I'm just like, I guess I'm just, I'm feeling like it's a little loose, like.
I think, so yes, those examples you raised are, I mean, those types of places, but Florence Fields and the agricultural fields beyond that would not be a candidate for this because they're already protected.
No, but if the, if the CSA went out of business, somebody could put up a pot place there.
Not for that, not in that particular location. It's probably more like, you know, in the meadows on the other side of, you know, the dyke, there are lots of farm parcels there, where the soil is good. You know, I think for, because of the limited season, you need a lot of, like, from what I understand, you need a lot of land to make it viable, and there aren't that many large parcels really outside of the meadows.
I guess I'm like thinking that there's also a lot of new language in the CCC regulation around craft growers and co-ops and co-op growing and that kind of thing. And so I think that there might be desire to open up smaller parcels. And I guess I don't want to just guess who's going to come in, I think it needs to be regulated, you know, like, we should just say, if we don't want small mini parcels everywhere, let's not allow them, you know, let's limit it to a certain square footage of big, big industrial type versus a bunch of little parcels that, I don't know, I just, I, I. The intention of the ordinance wasn't to dictate what size or scale of operation, but to allow that as an option if someone felt like that might be an appropriate use of a, of a parcel of land, but also make sure that visibly it doesn't intrude into the neighborhood, which is why site plan and not by right. So that was really the key, is so maybe we do want to look at growing outdoors in these districts, but we also want to make sure that visually it's not having a negative impact on the neighborhood.
Well, as you note, I mean, we'll develop a hybridization of indoor growing, hydroponics, most cultivation is probably going to be limited to indoor, there will be some outdoor, I mean, individuals can actually grow on their property, and I don't remember what the minimum plans were.
Six, for an individual, 12 for a household.
In a window box, so.
Well, they, they have to be fenced in according to the regulations.
Or, or on the third floor or something. So, counsel client.
I'm just wondering about greenhouses on some of the properties and, you know, people wanting to put up security around their greenhouses and if that, this would apply to that as well. So if they put up fencing, it would need to be covered with vegetation even around something like a greenhouse, like a large scale.
You're talking about for cult, for this particular cultivation?
Yeah.
Yeah, any kind of fencing, I mean, this is really outdoor cultivation, not within a greenhouse. A greenhouse would be more like an industrial, I don't think for in buildings, you're not going to have fencing, and, I mean, I guess you could, but I think it's going to be alarmed, I think you're not going to have windows, I think it's going to be much more of an industrial-sized building. It's not just going to be a glass greenhouse because, you know, that, and also that's not climate-controlled as well as, you know, an indoor facility that has ventilation systems that, you know, address all of, all the climate change issues inside one of those facilities. So, but nevertheless, this is about sort of outdoor growing and the fencing related to it.
And the fencing that's mandated?
Yeah.
Outdoor growing and the fencing that's currently mandated?
Right.
And so it's.
But again, we don't know if anybody would take this up as a, you know, would bother getting a license given that condition.
Counsel client.
And also, this, this ordinance really is about specifying that you need to have site plan approval for any outside, outdoor cultivation, not allowed by right, so you need to go, so, okay, that's the justice.
What comments on this? All right, moving on. That was, this is item, excuse me, 18.036. This is about, this is going to be really exciting for folks, this is amending the table of use. And it's, it actually just strikes one item, but this is, this is under Section 1, this to amend the table in attachment 12, warehousing, commercial storage as a principal use is struck. Carolyn.
So it's, given the evolution of our highway business districts to more multi-access and multi-use by pedestrians and bicyclists and just creating more of a lanes and aesthetic, a better aesthetic representation to the city, these kinds of highway businesses may be no longer appropriate for these types of uses that are, have very limited day-to-day use and really function more like an industrial kind of use, so taking it out of the highway business where we want to encourage other types of uses of this.
Does this become a problem in prime, real, commercial real estate areas? I know that usually you see these storage places, they're sort of relegated to places like floodplains and tornado alleys and things like that, and then, then they kind enough to say that they have secure storage for your property. But the idea here is to take them out of essentially, you know, zoning that would be appropriate for other, other more high-volume systems.
Right.
And then relocating into old, older structures that, that were designed as warehouses.
Or brand new, just pop up, you know, like on Route 10, you know, you have, and most everywhere, those newer ones that are fenced and they have the, you know, 75 bays or whatever that you just drive up. You know, originally, it was kept out of the industrial districts because they were pretty, you know, we went through a phase, I think, where they were really popular, sort of fill-in uses, they could generate some income for a property until some other maybe better use came along. And we were concerned about eliminating the opportunities for economic development in our industrial districts, and so we didn't want them in the industrial district. I mean, that shifted a little bit, we don't, I, there's not like a huge demand for these things, but I think just because of the type of use and the way they look and sort of where they're typically, where they make sense to be located, that's why we proposed this shift.
And so, for the record, this is not specific to marijuana, by the way, just say that. It's not for storage of marijuana, this is just another, this is.
Yeah, the reason why it's attached in the package is because we also wanted to add it to the OI table, and so we wanted those to come together, so that one, we're taking it out of one zone and putting it in another, and we are changing the OI table because of the marijuana production, so it just kind of, so.
Anyone have any thoughts on relocating or storage supply system, storage supply companies? Okay, let's go on to the next one. This is also, this is also actually not directly related to marijuana, this is an ordinance to reformat the general industrial table and other minor changes. And now, actually, Carolyn, why don't you just, why don't you just break it down for us? I think that's better.
So this table matches sort of the other tables, we've been slowly changing, and at the same time, just to clarify what it means to be in the, what it means for general industrial district, what kind of uses we want, for the layout of the setbacks, and then also because we need to take the use of production out of the definition section and move it into the table of use, we've taken the opportunity to do that here and add this warehousing sort of use up to 25,000 square feet. And then, whenever we go into a table, we look at any of the other issues that have arisen over the years since the last time we reviewed the district and try to make those changes all at once. So that's why some of those other bits are in there as well.
Any questions? No, I jumped ahead earlier, so I'm off. I was going to say, not being punished. Okay. All right, well, let's move on then. Okay, this is 3038, item 18.03, this is to reformat the office industrial table and allow flexible reuse of historic mill buildings, which you were able to report, Carolyn.
Again, the reformatting, but also thinking, so Office Industrial is a district, it's not quite like General Industrial, it doesn't have that sort of intense manufacturing continues. We've zoned a lot of the buildings that are the old mill buildings in the city are all, all zoned Office Industrial. And so there are several buildings that aren't, that are hard to reuse. We've just had this new building, new old building come on market, making a sheen, a lot of people are looking at different ways to reuse that building, and not just with that building, but many of these buildings, mill buildings have historic contamination issues, so they make it even more expensive to renovate and reinvest in. And so the idea in this change is to sort of think about, you know, why would it add other components to the uses that would help generate income that would offset those expenses that are required to rehab, update, reuse these buildings? So allowing more easily residential above the first floor so that two and three, four-story buildings could have potential, you know, either rental or condominium units, and then keep the ground floor as commercial use as we've always required in the Office Industrial. You know, we don't want to lose space opportunities for back office businesses or small manufacturing or startup companies, but we also want to allow a little bit more flexibility into the mix to make that more economically viable.
Including this, of course, is marijuana production.
Right, well, that was already allowed in the industrial district, but we're just moving that from the definition section to the table of use, but also including restaurant use, some little bit of retail and repair service, things that we don't, haven't typically required or allowed. required or allowed in the industrial districts. We don't want to, we have lots of space for retail and those kind of functions and restaurants, of course.
And there's, there's not an enormous inventory. We're not like Hoyop in that respect. We don't have a
Right.
enormous inventory of buildings predating nineteen thirty-nine that were built in subject. Uh, Councilor Klein and Councilor Murphy.
I don't personally know what's involved in the production of marijuana, but I'm just wondering if these locations can kind of support what might be needed in terms of, I mean, I don't know how much kind of a fluvia there might be or how much water use and the, you know, how much the pipes will need to hold. So I'm just curious about, you know, how much that's been thought about in terms of using old mill buildings for this, for production of marijuana.
We haven't thought about that in particular. So the marijuana production isn't just for the old mill buildings. It's for any property. So there are other parcels in the city that are office industrial besides, you know, those pictures I showed there. You know, there's some office industrial out on East Hampton Road. So it's not just about recapturing the mill buildings.
I'm just thinking about the difference in the infrastructure for a place like that versus an office industrial area, which I think would have more kind of updated and robust infrastructure, I would imagine.
It could. You know, we have some industrial district on East Hampton Road and there's no sewer service there. So that's an issue for, you know, that area. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but, you know, this is really just to sort of pull back some of the regulatory impediments to reusing the building. And then if someone, if, you know, a potential producer were interested in looking at those buildings, obviously that's something they'd have to take into consideration. Most of these are served by water and sewer, so maybe the internal systems aren't up to code or robust enough to handle that. But I would think that would be, sort of, that would be part of any kind of decision tree that's made as to whether it's a viable operation there.
Oh, did I notice too that it's going to make it easier for some live work?
Well, it's the, we already allow live work, but instead of tying live to work in the building, we're separating those. So I could go and live on the second floor of one of those buildings, but work downtown. Right now, the restriction is only live work, which means you have to live in the building. And initially, that idea was instituted to make sure that there weren't concerns or conflicts with nuisance, noise, smells of things coming out of the industrial portion of the building for people living in it because they, they work there, so they know what they're dealing with. And I think it's just, it's hard to enforce. So this idea is really to say, all right, we're not going to make those, make a requirement that those are tied together. If someone wants to live in a building where there's other stuff going on on the first floor, they know that going in, they can make that decision.
If you go all the other, maybe, not only for marijuana production, but for also for a restaurant or for any other facility, it's a heavy lift. I mean, to, to retrofit, to accommodate the existing standing laws for restaurant, safe structures, cafes, clubs, spray-quiz systems, water
Energy.
water capability, energy, any, any of those systems. So it would apply to marijuana as well. In some respect, there's already a built-in limitation. There's a pretty, pretty steep expense associated with trying to accommodate and retrofit these systems in order to accommodate them. But, and there are other statutes that, that address those. We have sprinkler requirements, for instance, certain capacity requirements and things like that. What this does, actually, you're also, as you mentioned before, the issue of sole photovoltaic, no longer requires a site plan, a site, site review.
Special permit, yeah.
Special permit and also parking.
Yep.
Reduce the parking. So, and as you pointed out, the ones that we have, and I'm trying to think, I was, while you were talking about, I was trying to think of any building in town that might have very limited parking as it stands. Now, the only thing I can come up with is the Felt Building, of course, which doesn't really have parking now and there are currently parking down at, at Alumni Field and stuff, but...
The only other building that's a bit constrained, well, I guess you could, there's, so one of the, one of the office industrial districts is, it contains the mill building along the bike path in Portland Center. So there's, there's parking along there, but it's, you know, long narrow section. And then there's the non-attack mill, one end of it is constrained by parking. There's a small parking lot around that end. But they have another parcel across the way. In fact, they went to the planning board for special permit to allow the use of the, essentially off-site parking to help support that building. But so those are the two that I can think of that have sort of limited parking.
Other questions? Are you kidding me? That's it? Okay. That's, that's it for the...
And I will say that planning board voted unanimously to recommend.
Patrick, did you want to speak?
Yes, wanted to speak in support of this change.
Sure.
Not quite enough, so.
Okay, full share.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Brown. I live in North Five. I'm also the vice chair for the city's housing partnership. Wanted to speak tonight in support of the change that's being discussed for the historic mill buildings, particularly in support of the lowering residences above the first floor by right. With this, we're not looking at capillary affordable housing, but it helps with the supplying the balance for housing generally, generally in the city and how that'll assist with affordability for housing by allowing additional units. The papers I'm handing out are speaking to general housing affordability in the city. And that, looking compared to nineteen eighty, while the average income is still approximately thirty-four thousand, it's gone up like two thousand dollars in the last thirty years. The, the average cost of a new home went from ninety-five thousand dollars in nineteen eighty to three hundred and eleven thousand dollars now. So about three times increase. And as we saw, looking at forty-four percent of Norhampin rents and fifty percent of those renters are cost burden, meaning that they pay thirty percent or more in their housing costs. And of that group, half of that is severely cost burden, meaning they've paid fifty percent or more in housing. And looking at homeowners, twenty percent of them are cost burden. So anything that we do to increase overall housing in the city, or at least slow the growth of housing costs, and although this is a small piece, is another piece that helps. And also appreciate that the ordinance satisfaction doesn't increase the parking requirements. I couldn't find a direct study to speak to this particular case of when you have buildings that already exist that you allow certain uses in and then add residences later. But in general, if you're building a new building, adding parking requirements can drive up the cost of the unified twenty percent at least. And it simply can impact any of the businesses who are adding, adding to the list of allowed uses. So whatever we develop by not adding more sprinkler parking requirements is going to be more affordable to the end user, whether that's as a residence or as a business. And this, this ordinance, to me, kind of, when I read it, I imagined something like East Works in East Hampton, where you have residences on the top floor and a variety of residences down floor, other floors. That's like a very promising model to look at. So, thank you for the, for the plan department for this board. And I hope it gets adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or discussion on the items that are iterated? I'll accept the motion closing of the panel. Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, I, I maybe missed something because I'm not too clear on process. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So I am interested in that map and that it includes Florence Center and thinking about whether we have options or whether this is preordained and whether I missed my opportunity to weigh in on how that Florence Center is developed and what's allowed to be there. A couple of my concerns are specific to the kind of neighborhood it is. We do have a lot of empty retail space. We have some struggling businesses. I can see how if we're not careful and thoughtful about how development goes forward, that it could become a kind of default location for, for, you know, a disproportionate number of places. So I would want it to be a destination for that, in part because it's, as you know, highly residential. It's not too far from the middle school and it's where all the middle schoolers, including one of my sons, goes on a Friday afternoon to wander the shops and get an ice cream or hang out at Cooper's. And then also that, getting back to the idea of, you know, what are the buffer zones, another concern would be some of the housing that we have in the area that supports our residents who are struggling with addiction or unable to live on their own and kind of what the impact would be on them and their recovery. And then also places like, that you might think are akin to schools, like, you know, hospitals or libraries or other places where we have different public interest around how the space is used. So those are the considerations that I'd hope to put forward, but I don't know if the map is done, you know.
Well, to your point about preordained, no, this is government. Nothing's preordained. The fact is, it is a process. And it's not necessarily a fast, elegant process by any stretch. The advocate, whatever, whatever transpires today, whether, and if this gets referred with a positive recommendation, gets voted and approved on the council floor, there are still opportunities to modify and change throughout, forever, forever, uh, within the limitations of Mass General law, just to be clear. That, that stuff, more or less, at least as far as we're concerned, is preordained. We, we would have to challenge in court any of the things that we found that, that if we were constrained by Mass General law and didn't serve us, we'd have to petition the state or sue. Not a very successful operation as it will, but there you go. So, yeah, I mean, insofar, this is, this is the recommendation is what you're saying. It is, in the end, it will, you know, I, I'm not sure, I mean, I haven't heard any proposed amendments, but currently this is, as it stands, if amendments are brought forward by, by councilors or by petition or by the mayor, all the people qualify to actually request modifications and changes, then be considered changed if it's, if there's a majority vote on it.
All right, thank you.
So there you go.
And so who made the recommendations?
This comes, these recommendations actually are essentially parallel, tied to, as, as Carolyn mentioned, they are trying to put in place what already exists in the process of be established for regulating medical marijuana.
Right.
So we're obliged to do that. And we are, and then if we're going to make specific recommendations, then that, that comes further for the government. Also, given the fact that even, we still don't have the final version of what the state regulations are. That's part of a problem. We're sort of making things up slightly in the dark. We have much more, we have a much better idea about what their intents are, but as it stands now, we're, we're, what we need to do is to change this zoning before April first. Otherwise, actually, there are no restrictions. There wouldn't be buffer zones applied. There wouldn't be, they wouldn't exist. Because applications start going in, whoever applies, whatever existing law that's standing on the statutes applies. And they, they don't need to conform to, they don't need, I mean, they don't need to conform to the buffer zone, so.
I imagine that the medical standards and guidelines only take us so far in terms of what's helpful and what makes sense, right? That, that a medical establishment would have more of the look and feel and function of a pharmacy. And the possibilities here for retail marijuana are for something a lot more festive, right? With, you know, with signs and access and, and an impact on our street life. And so I ask you, as a body, to think ahead for most of us who either can't really see the map because it's so tiny, or aren't really sure what's happening in our town, to consider an advance, like what this is going to be like for people when they realize its effect on their neighborhood. I'm new to this process and I appreciate very much this opportunity. I appreciate your leadership in thinking about what it's going to be like when people actually see, you know, next door we have this or down the street we have that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just two quick points. First, signage is strictly controlled under the state regulations. So there won't be big marijuana leaves and flashing lights and things of that nature. It's not going to look too different than what the medical...
It wouldn't conform to our zone as it stands, no.
So it's, it's not going to be all that different. And I guess the, pardon me. The other point is that it's going to be a slow process. And the state is going to be vetting these individuals very closely. There's record checks, there's all sorts of things. So even what the town passes on, grants permits for and executes host agreements for, the state still gets a second bite of the apple, so to speak, of regulating the individuals who are really operating these places.
And this is a little off topic, but could you describe the vetting process? Because there is embedded in that local impact, proposed impact process. And if you could explain what that is.
Well, the, the state statute that creates this, the legal marijuana licensing process says that in addition to any special permit relief that may be involved, in addition to these comprehensive state regulations, if the city or town feels that there's a need for further regulation of the use, those, what are referred to in the statute as mutual responsibilities of both the applicant and the licensee and the town can be spelled out in this host agreement. So that there's plenty of places for local control. And obviously, the other significant aspect of this host agreement is giving the town municipal sales tax over not just retail, but the other facilities. The state law allows a retail sales tax right now for, allows a sale tax right now just for the retail. And, but the host agreement allows a city or town to exact up to three percent for up to five years for these other types of uses as well.
And the, the host permissions essentially can be retail, retailer-specific sites?
It's, it's specific to any licensee. So any licensee that is, that once it obtains its special permit relief or other type of zoning relief, then has to execute a host agreement with the executive of the town before their application will be deemed complete at the state level.
So red flags per retailer, red flags that may come up during the process, per retailer can be addressed by, by the city?
One would assume that the state process would not happen in a vacuum.
Right.
And that there would be some type of communication.
I get your whole point.
But I, I think that, that you can't open whatever the town is, even if the town has signed off the host agreement, the special permit relief and everything else, stating and ran a license because there's some individual, some personality, some criminal record problems, some fraud problems, some enforcement actions and some other civil proceeding, which is part of what the background check process involves. You don't get the license open up from the state if those problems exist.
I don't know of any other enterprise that's regulated like that.
Medical marijuana.
Medical marijuana.
You're not suggesting, though, that the host agreement would be individualized for each different establishment, are you?
Well, I, I, I think it's conceivable that different uses, a manufacturing use, a cultivation use, would have different impact, a different impact than retail use. It's conceivable.
But in other words, a host agreement for any retailer would look the same.
Presumably.
It's not like
The statute...
you're going to build in different things for different locations.
Unlike medical, unlike medical, retail has very specific things that go into the host agreement. And so I would think that, and I'm actually sort of trolling the state for any forms of host agreements right now. A lot of municipal lawyers are looking for them, not any that have responded to have any. So we don't really know exactly what they're going to look like yet. But they'll be pretty uniform. But each, each retailer's going to have to enter into a host agreement. And, you know, these are, so, and I just want to step back a little bit and make it clear to the woman from Florence, this is just...
This is just laying out a broad picture of where marijuana establishments can be located. If, if, if the retailer can go through the rest of the process and get through and come out the other end, these are the places that it could be. So, but there's a rigorous process to get out the other end and just because these areas are opened up to marijuana uses doesn't mean that they're going to be inundated with it, with those uses, because there's all these other processes to go through. This is just sort of a broad, like overview of the city and then we're going to have to zoom in on each location and each proposed retailer or.
Can I just for clarification? So in other words, are you sort of saying that, just in the sake of time and that, that this is sort of just like a, I mean, why not do it thoughtfully from the start? Like, so like, I don't understand why we need a broad brush versus a more.
Because that's what zoning is. Zoning is a broad brush. Zoning is districts, districts in which certain uses are allowed. And sometimes in zoning, there are special permits required or site plan review required or uses allowed as a right. But this is sort of the, the aerial photo of the city and it becomes much more difficult when you get to this, to the particular retailer or particular site.
And I know some communities.
And so it's the same thing if this were any other retail. No one says liquor stores are allowed in these districts. Well, why don't we zoom in and do something more, more, more specific? This is zoning. This is zoning where districts have to be uniform. We separate the city into districts and we have uniform uses that are allowed and not allowed in those districts. Now let's zoom in and figure out exactly who is going to do what where. But this is just zoning. And so I don't want to, I don't want you to think that we can regulate that much further into the particular retailer in zoning.
No, and I'm not asking you to, but I guess I'm just asking for a slightly more, you know, a less broad stroke. And I feel like that we do have that opportunity now and, you know, that why, that, you know, to not include, you know, certain other categories like this other person was saying with the, you know, the hospitals or, or other things that, you know, we don't know. I mean, and, and include more, less farmland than what is being allowed or, you know, I just think, you know, this is new. It's not alcohol. It's, and a lot of towns are doing special permits, you know, because we want to see what this is going to look like and have a little more control and, you know, and I know that the host agreements allow some, some additional revenue and some additional, you know, controls and stuff, but, you know, it gets really tricky too when you do things individual by individual and not like this is just what we want in our community, this is our policy, you know? Otherwise there can be a lot of unequal treatment and we did it for them, we should do it for them and I don't know. Host agreements, you know, have a role, but they're not.
But that's what's, host agreements.
We can't rely on host agreements to, to zone for us or to do other things for us.
But farmland isn't a district, you know? Farmland is in a district and everything in that district has to be uniform.
But we could say a certain size, you know? I mean, we, we, there's a lot of things we can do and I don't, I just don't want it to sound like we can't do those things. As a community, we can.
Well, no, actually no one said that.
Okay.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to suggest that of course that can be.
I'm just worried like this is all going to go through in a week and it's a done thing, you know, unless I can get how many signatures.
Let me reemphasize, there are no done things. Doesn't happen. The, what is, there is kind of, what is critical is at least get our laws to conform and be, be compliant. That's, that's kind of, that's the clock that's ticking. Also, the planning board relative to zoning is a discretionary board, particularly on, on site plan review. They, they basically, they take in the testimony of the community that feels that would be adversely impacted and try to assimilate that and make it work, but that's where the granular work is done that Councilor Seawall is talking about. We are describing and defining the boundaries at this point and mostly to comport with the law. Then, and then, then the time comes as we discuss and, you know, when we data, when we grab data sets and, and figure out what the metrics are and figure out what the impacts are, then we make, then we make the adjustments and we legislate and it's constantly in flux. It's constantly fluid, at least within our limited powers and authorities that are granted to us by the state. And some of that, I mean, some of the things you ask actually is out of our, out of our wheelhouse, I think so.
Thanks.
Any other thoughts, any comments? Oh, so there was a motion, close the public hearing. Is there a signee? Good, a second. Second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. Aye. If I close the public hearing doesn't mean that we're done. We also have, I know you want to leave. Do you want to stay around for the taxi ordinance?
Oh, you are, you.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you came so close.
I know. I saw everyone was.
I could say one, one thing. I just wanted, I mean, in terms of growing, if people wanted to see what that was all about, they could go to the Medicare website and there's a tour of the facility and everything. And we offer people if they wanted to go to, for a trip, they're welcome to do that. What? Oh, your city's canceled van, yeah.
Okay. Yes.
I just said this to the folks.
I'd like to move that we set 18, 027, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, the council with a positive recommendation. Their second. That was all ones we, apparently. Any others that we changed?
My reason for that is, you know, the time to the essence in anything is to get this zoning of the books prior to April 1st, so there isn't a free for all. I mean, this is the one thing, this is the one thing we got to act on with some haste so it isn't just wide open. I think it's responsible for. Other thoughts on that? I agree. I agree. Okay. Any other discussion? No? All those in favor of a positive referral to the, to the council, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Okay. So now we're up to item 17.265. That's a smaller number than the ones we've been addressing. That's because this has been around for a long time. And we have Councilor Shara here, also Solicitor Seawall, and then of course, Councilor Murphy was our legacy here for.
I'd like to move we refer this back to the services.
You were going to get stabbed with a.
I did not get a warm, funny feeling with that.
Where is it? Actually, rather than read through all these, I would, part of, part of the problem, we hunted on this last time because actually Councilor Murphy was not here. Councilor Shara was not able to show up and I had forgiven the solicitor from showing up. We realized we didn't know, we didn't know about the granular historical arc on this. So we didn't even know, I mean, we, we have not seen, we didn't get tracking.
It's been carbon dated, that's all.
Okay. So if, 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 if Councilor Shara or Solicitor Seawall would like to just sort of give us an overview about what we're looking at here and why, do you feel like, do you feel up to that?
Be my guest. You've got, you've got two more hearings on this than I have.
Well, so the last time we were all together to discuss this, John Fry, the Sealer and Wives members, brought up a couple of points that hadn't been talked about before and that is what led us to review this again. So his two main concerns were, to refresh your memory, we had this, the new ordinance or the change had been to go away from hardwired meters. Oh no, there had, it's been hardwired meters that are never used. It had to say, it put them in and said that's what we were going to use or to use an app because this is what's done all over with Uber and Lyft and successfully. His concern, and this is his specialty, is that the margin of error for the app was too large for comfort for him. And his other concern was that we, there, some of the users that, that he was concerned about are typically elderly or people who've established relationships with taxis where they have sort of a set rate that they use. And it may be a reduced rate, they've used forever, they have an agreement. And he was worried that this was going to impact them and that they would no longer be able to get the services that they really needed in a way that they, they could afford. So he met with Chief Casper and together they worked on a few changes. And so what we have, what they've gone to is that we are back to sort of what had been done in practice, which is that there will not be meters or you won't need to use an app. The companies will agree on, on a rate and it will need to be posted. And, and if they want to hardwire a meter, they can, but that app will not be written into ordinance. And they will have to post their fares. The other thing that they noticed was missing was that we, we hadn't sort of figured out how to handle companies that were, weren't licensed here in North Hampton but were licensed elsewhere. So they added in there that you can pick up or drop off a fare in North Hampton, but you can't do both. So an outside company that's not licensed here can't come in and pick someone up and then drop them within North Hampton. They could pick someone up and drop them here or elsewhere, but only North Hampton licensed companies can do the entire trip within.
And they also can't do a flag, right? They can't be.
Right, and they can't be flagged.
Can't be billed.
Correct. So those are the latest changes on this. And Mr. Seawall, you, you looked at it?
I did. I thought the changes were thoughtful. I mean, I hadn't done any independent research on what taxi ordinances look else, look like elsewhere, but I remember when we were at this committee, I believe, last year.
Different committee?
You know, we, there was a, a decision made not to regulate out of town cabs. And so that is another thing that's changed. I think that the, just to, to get back behind where we were before John got involved and expressed his concerns to the police chief, one of the cab companies owners complained that he seemed to be the only one who was actually running on taxi plates and everybody else was doing livery plates and it's a lot cheaper to run a livery. The, the insurance rates are much lower of this, you know, it's just much cheaper and easier to run a livery, but they were operating as taxis. That's what prompted this whole process to get started. And of course, as, as always, the devil's always in the details. It was a great, you know, it seemed like a great idea, but the further we went, the more the devil emerged. And so I think that we have crafted a much better ordinance now and I think that John's suggestions were good ones and not something that I would have thought of, that they were elderly people in the city who have longstanding relationships with cab companies and take them to their, you know, every two week doctor's appointment or, you know, whatever it is. But they have standing arrangements with cab companies that would be amended by this new ordinance. So that's how we got to where we are.
That's a right. Oh, and just in the end, the last time this came up, in, in front of the previous committee, that's when John came forward and Chief Casper is the sponsor, the two of them agreed, we continue to the new session, they would go and put their heads together and then reintroduce what we have in front of us based on John's feedback. So that's kind of why it didn't get acted on in the last session, but now it's come back. The chief is the sponsor with John's input. This hopefully is the final version.
Right. And I, I think it still accomplishes the goal of making a distinction between taxi licenses.
And the reason. And can you describe how that happens on this? Because that was in the original iteration, right? Addressing livery versus taxi licenses.
So what the distinctions are?
Yeah, how, how the distinctions are more clarified here. Because that's not in the amended language that we currently have.
Um.
Is it just the limitation of outside cab companies?
Yes.
Because we have, we have local companies that are running livery vehicles, right?
Right. So the definition does, in the beginning of the ordinance, it does say taxis and then livery vehicles and specifies the 15 passengers and.
Right, right. But that's existing language, isn't it? Currently the definition of livery versus taxi.
The whole thing is a new draft.
I mean, there's some new bits in all of it, but if you look under subsection 316-19, operation and marking of livery vehicles, there's a whole section on sort of the distinction of livery vehicles.
Okay. And that's new language?
I think it just doesn't.
I don't have like my, all my past copies.
I wasn't expecting to be speaking to this.
I'm sorry. I, I really didn't.
I should have brought my, I forgot to bring my giant folder with many, many, many versions.
Councilor Donald, you've been, you've been involved with this in terms of.
I think we added the livery definition. And that is new. It just doesn't show, I think what you see here are the amendments, the amendments.
That's what I'm saying. That's the only version we have, so we don't know.
So, so what, I think that what this ordinance now does is to prohibit livery, livery vehicles from picking up on-demand fares and any other fare that was not arranged more than 12 hours before the ride. So cabs can, are, are.
Quick, quick.
Livery is more like the airport.
Right.
Trans orders. Now, trans orders.
Yeah, so you should have the entire ordinance.
Yeah, I do. I mean, here's my problem is that I, right now, the only, I only see the paragraphs at the bottom here that are amended and then I, so I didn't know, for comparative trash purposes, what improvements and enhances have we made from the original documents?
It's in your paper package.
From the original?
Well, that, we never, we don't have the original. What we have is the, the ones that were submitted.
We just didn't see what's.
The one that was submitted by the police and that went through a number of amendments over the course of time and doesn't show all those amendments, only shows this whole section.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's.
Yes.
I'm fine with that. I'm not, I'm not contesting it. I just want to be clear.
I understand.
So that I don't appear dumber than you.
And, and the bottom line problem that will still remain is enforcement of the, of the difference between the cab and, and the livery vehicle. Because we could have a licensed livery vehicle, people behaving like a cab. The question is, you know, do the police take the time to deal with it and say, you can't, you know? The ordinance may say what the ordinance says, but at some point, they've got to go and actually enforce it and I don't know to what extent, you know? It's like our dealings in the old days with the engine brakes. We can put the signs up, but if they don't enforce it.
It's my understanding that having a clear ordinance will help them enforce.
Will help them if they choose to, yeah.
That was one of the reasons that's hard to enforce.
It's a complaint.
Yeah, it's a complaint.
But at least they'll have a capacity to.
We're never going to know when the passenger in a livery vehicle called and arranged the ride. I mean, that's just.
Unless it's complaint driven and interesting to see, you'd have to actually pull them over, ask the person in the back whether you called 12 hours before that. Okay, but it is, it does, it provides some nuance where nuance did not exist before.
A real framework for them to enforce if they want to.
Other, to the point you just said, for livery, they're required to have like a written log.
A log, yeah.
So that should be recorded and you'd be able to see if they had called or not.
Any other questions? I, I, I agree. I mean, I think this is, is clear. I wish I could remember the original. I do, I actually remember discussing the original years ago and for some reason I didn't retain it all. I don't know what's the matter with it.
Probably bump it to next session.
No, no. I, I, I would accept a.
I would move, we, I'd move with the council the positive recommendation, hoping not to see it again for a while.
Was that a second? Council, five seconds. Any discussion on the positive referral to the city council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All accept the motion to adjourn? Okay. All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye. Thank you all very much.